Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic on which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here he is, here on. Made it. You just missed the flag so much. Good evening, everybody. It is the planning board regular monthly meeting. It's Tuesday, August 27th. It's about two minutes past 5:00 PM. And we're now calling this meeting to order. Have you folks on the planning boards had a chance to look at the minutes from that were sent to us? And if so, I'll take a motion to accept minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Grania and Ron, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. We'll move right on to the work session. Number three on the agenda. Number one subsection is 201 Main Street, Jean-Jermain Library. Site plan application for the failed HVAC system. We have the attorney here, Tiffany Scarletto.
Good evening, everyone. Tiffany Scarletto, 36 West Porter Street, Suite 202, is the center of our movie where the applicant is. I agree. We recently submitted, and this was, I apologize for the late submission, this was late Friday, to the first we were able to get the acoustics report sent out, which was dated July 29th. Material specifications also dated July 29th. A letter from Lizardos Engineering, Patrick Tennant from Lizardos Engineering on Zoom. And then that letter was dated 22nd. Site plan engineering. Latest revised was August 26th. This was not revised just yesterday, it was being live. Patrick did those plans, so we have the landscape plan and three rendering engines completed by Ed Hollander dated July 17th. I know the board didn't quite have an opportunity to review everything, it ended up hoping for you, so I'm going to thank Sean Hartman of SoundSense to give you a review of the acoustics prepared that we've had received.
Great, yeah, no, exactly. Because it came in late, we didn't have a chance to look. So it'd be helpful if your people walk us through it. That'd be great. Thank you. Hello.
Sean Hartman. I'm a senior acoustic consultant at SoundSense. Our offices are located at 39 Industrial Road in Winston, around the corner. I am happy to review the report. So everybody has a paper copy of the report, yes?
Yes.
So I'll give an overview of the report. And then I can walk through the report once it's hired, just so that the board has an understanding of the work that was completed.
Great.
So as a broad overview, we completed a weekend worth of noise monitoring to take a look at existing sound levels at the site of the Jean-Jermain Library to ensure that there weren't any existing sound levels that would cause any evaluation criteria to need to be raised, meaning if the existing sound levels were higher than the code criteria in the Village of Sag Harbor's noise ordinance. The noise monitoring that we completed showed that it did not warrant any kind of raising of the criteria. So the village noise ordinance was the appropriate criteria to review the report. To review the sound levels, yes, rather. When we reviewed the site plan as it was previously submitted, there were some concerns regarding sound levels at the neighbor that was directly to the
North.
Right, but I don't know. Said to the east.
Or to the east, okay.
To the east regarding the sound levels there.
Yeah.
At grade and so we went through the process of analyzing mitigation options. The mitigation that we reviewed included an acoustic barrier, which also necessitated some changes in grade because the because the unit, as it would have been designed, would have, the top of the unit would have been higher than the acoustic barrier. So some regrading was necessary in order to raise the height of the barrier and make sure that the top of the unit would be equal with the top of the with the barrier.
Got it.
Okay. The barrier, we recommended that the barrier was then lined with an acoustic material that would help to absorb sound inside the enclosure so that you don't have what we would call reverberation amplification, which is when you have a lot of reflective surfaces. Think about if you're in a house that is just sheet rock and just paint or not paint, but furniture, rugs, things like that. You have this huge reverberation amplification of the noise, right? Same kind of thing can happen outdoors in the apartment, so it's important, it was important to add some absorption into that enclosure and to add the other acoustic material to help to stop the ones from going through. I do have a sample of the material as well, if it's helpful.
And that goes inside the fencing or the barrier?
Goes inside the barrier, that's correct. Right? And so the back layer of it helps to stop an additional sound from going through the barrier and the quilted face of it helps to absorb the sound that is within the enclosure.
Mm-hmm.
So I can go through the report. There are a lot of definitions on the first few pages of the report that we'd like to bring up page nine, number 11. Start our discussion.
Good.
So basically, all that this page is showing is the noise monitoring location, which we monitored the noise levels for three days, starting Friday, July 26th, ending Sunday, July 28th. The noise monitors were measured at the location that the mechanical equipment is proposed at the Jean-Jermain Library. And then moving on to the next couple of pages. The data on an hourly basis, we provided the data in case anybody would like to review the specific data that was collected. There's different data points that are on the graph. The LEQ is kind of like an hourly average. It's an energy average. It's not an arithmetic average. It's a sound energy average. The Lmax is the maximum sound level that happens. Could be a bird, could be a car going by. There's a lot of different things that could cause that. The most important data is the L90, which is there. That is the data for which 90% of the time, the sound level is higher than that. That is the level that we typically refer to as background sound level. So that is the level that we really looked at to make sure that that level was below the Village of Sag Harbor noise ordinance, that there wasn't any kind of other evaluation that we needed to complete.
Good.
When, if you take a look on the next page, 12. When we looked at that one line, there were a couple of different hours that the Village of Sag Harbor noise ordinance not only has a overall loudness component, which for daytime is, for commercial is 70 dBA and for nighttime is 55 dBA, but it also has octave band sound levels as well. So what that means is that you have the overall loudness, but you also have sound levels at different frequencies, different pitches of the sound. Is something low pitched, is it high pitched? Sounds have a mix of all of that in there and we evaluate all of those different types of things. Basically, this is showing that at a couple of, a number of the instances that we've recorded, there were a couple of times in figure 4.1.5 that the sound levels were exceeded on an octave band basis. It was really due to insects and things like that. It's something that wouldn't be present in the winter, so basically we throw it out and just use the village ordinance.
Okay.
So I'll skip down to table 4.2.1. That provides the sound levels with no further mitigation, okay? So you have the east neighbor at grade, you have the east neighbor, the second floor window, the north neighbor at grade and the north neighbor, second floor window. And I'll point out, the sound levels for the east neighbor and for the north neighbor are outside of the house, at the house itself, okay? And looking at what is, what is there right now, as far as those homes are concerned, there is no outdoor space on the second floor. The New York State DEC documentation that we would typically use for evaluation does call that it can be appropriate to model sound indoors. And even with a window open, you do get a loss of about five decibels of sound per that New York State DEC documentation. So that was not included in the first table, but that loss of the five decibels is included in the second table. That's in section five. The assumption is that even if somebody had their windows open, there's still a little bit of acoustic loss. Because you can see in the table that at the east neighbor second floor window, it is one decibel above the ordinance if the equipment were in full operation. Okay?
And if I guess you physically put like some sort of mechanism, some, some to, to up high?
We did not, no. We mathematically modeled it.
You modeled it, okay.
So yeah, we mathematically modeled the resulting sound levels.
Okay, got it.
Using just standard equations.
Got it, great.
For distance.
Got it, okay.
So it's just based off the manufacturer's?
It's based off the manufacturer data for the unit at full capacity.
Right.
Correct.
Is there any change in that on an aging unit? Does the manufacturer have any?
The manufacturer doesn't have any information on that on a changing unit. I mean, there can be, there can be some change, especially like if the fan goes out of balance or something like that. And briefly maintenance is, of course, important, but no, the manufacturer doesn't.
It's just the same.
Okay, cool. I think your 4.2.1 just shows the octave band sound levels and it shows the same thing, basically, that at the east neighbor at grade and at the east neighbor, the second floor window, there, it exceeds the the noise ordinance limits, so therefore we go to mitigation.
Okay.
I'll skip over the next couple of pages. They really just show the importance of for during implementation phase for the applicant, that sealing a hole in the acoustic barrier is very important because small holes can mean a big difference in how much sound is let through a barrier. And have some studies on that. So there's, on page 16 of the report, there's a list of mitigation measures that we've recommended to the applicant. I know that the applicant has agreed to implement all of the mitigation measures that are listed here. So they include the regrading, basically, that we discussed earlier. It includes the lining of the barrier with the acoustic material that we discussed and I gave to you guys. Anything below grade, we're also asking for that to have acoustic treatment so that the sound is absorbed. It doesn't necessarily need to be that material, but there's a different material that, that has a blanket that can be used there. We've also requested that the machinery be isolated on spring isolators. When you would have equipment that is not installed on spring isolators, the vibration of the equipment itself can cause additional noise that's not captured in the manufacturer data, sometimes in the real world. So we've asked that the equipment be placed on appropriate vibration isolation for it. And going to the last page of the report. Using the, using the correction factor from outdoor to indoor from New York State DEC and the improvement that the barrier is anticipated to provide, the results are shown in, are in table 5.2.1 and table 5.2. And those results show basically that at all of the receiving locations, you would be, we would anticipate that you are in compliance with the village ordinance.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
I know that's a lot of information, very quickly, and trying to give you this detail of the overview as I can. But I know that you guys will need to review the report and everything. If you may have some additional questions. I'd be happy to answer any questions now as well.
Thank you, Sean. That's helpful. Any questions, anyone?
No, no, no. I just thank you for going through all the effort to do it. Especially the library for being a good neighbor and doing all of this.
Yeah, no, it's really helpful. I mean, that's the information we were missing.
Yeah.
Super helpful. And I guess the only other thing would be that, I mean, there's renderings from the top down would just be the visibility of the acoustic wall.
Yeah, and I know that Patrick and Lizardos would probably be able to
We're gonna talk about that.
speak to all that aspect more.
Good.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As far as visibility, I know we just talked about them. There's a landscaping plan in, and those photographs and renderings are pre-rendered, should be pre-rendered also. And those three renderings were completed by Ed Hollander's office.
Right.
There's one, they're spread.
Yeah, those are bright, yeah.
They're all scattered with the three renderings.
So it's hard to keep skewed by the fencings.
It appears to be completely obscured. So it's just looking for some direction toward if there's anything else that you require. I know that the site plan does have to be updated slightly to include all of the issues that were, all of the recommendations that were recommended by the acoustics report. We don't have to do, we made a couple of changes to the site plan. Patrick can probably address the timing around that. But obviously, we'd like to get it from the other that is done.
Sure. And I assume, is Patrick going to be speaking now? I'm curious about the regrading. He mentioned regrading. I just want to know what that is.
Address the regrading?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. See everyone again. My name's Patrick Tennant with Lizardos Engineering. So we, I know I, I was at the meeting about, I want to say two months ago. So what we've done here is we have revised the site plans to incorporate the recommendations from the acoustics study. So one path was a combination of regrading and semi-recessing the unit down a little bit to really accommodate, you know, one of the goals of the study, which was to have the top of the fence line in line with the top of the unit. So based on, you know, what the site plan that you see right now, that's devised so that the top of the fence line will be in line with the top of the unit to help mitigate any sound coming out of the equipment itself. Additionally, we call for the acoustics material on the interior of the fence surrounding, the barrier surrounding the unit. And the, to go along with that, that regrading and, and, you know, semi-recessing of the unit, what we have is there has to be some drainage. So we do show a drain line on, let me just double check which, which sheet that is on. On the post-footing detail on drawing C103, we call for the sound material on the interior side, the equipment side of that barrier, as well as a six-inch perforated drain pipe going from the kind of what we're creating is almost a little basin around the unit to ensure that there's no water collection within that, within that equipment area. The, the one thing that was mentioned that's not currently shown on the site plan, and typically that would come up more on the mechanical drawings themselves, you know, which are being revised, but is the vibration isolation that Sean had discussed. That's all going to be coordinated with the manufacturer as far as the specification of that vibration isolation to make sure it's at the proper support points on the unit. So that's one item that we can add indication on the site plan itself, just to make sure that, okay, everything's indicated on the site plan as in compliance with the, with the sound study that was done. But the full specification of that is really typically on the mechanical plans themselves. Were there any specific questions on the, the plans?
Anyone have any questions? I haven't, I haven't obviously haven't looked through closely. Can you just talk to me about the, the fence, the, the material itself that's on the barrier? You talked about the, the blanket on the inside.
Correct. So it's, it's, it's a wood fence, right? It's, it's a wood, pressure-treated wood fence currently. As far as the exact material of that fence, you know, that's, we'll finalize that with architectural review board to make sure that that's in line with their recommendations. But the, the key point here on the fence is that that's a wood fence with the acoustic liner on the interior side of that. Additionally, the landscaping plan that was developed is designed to really shroud the entirety of the enclosure. So visually, there's not much visually that you'll, you'll identify from street level of the enclosure itself.
And I realize you, I know Ed Hollander did these. I'm assuming Ed knows very well, knows what he's doing. I assume this is a year-round plan in terms of like, it's not all deciduous. It's, it will look good year-round as opposed to just in the summertime, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, very good. Good. Thank you very much. Questions, anyone?
No, I think it's great. I think this is what we were looking for.
Yeah. Yeah. Kathy, have any, any thoughts?
I was just looking at the rendering and it doesn't look like the side of the building. So is that, is that clear that this is, you know, when we started, you were looking at that side of the building?
It is, it is. I guess they just forgot to put brick and delay on that side of the building. It is still the same bench as before.
It's the same.
Okay, I just think that that should be clarified on that, that is everybody's happy?
It's just a model.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a model, yeah.
I was just, when I looked at it, I wasn't sure we were in the right spot because of that.
I, I made the assumption that it's a, it's a model or a digital creation.
So just from the perspective of the, the noise study, we've never had a lot of these over the years. This is very comprehensive. They've done exactly what is done and, you know, came up with conclusions that there was mitigation required. They're proposing the mitigation. These, they're experts, so I would, I would be fine, you know, I I wouldn't have anything to say about this.
Right, right.
Unless you wanted to hire an acoustic expert to review it.
No.
No.
No, no.
I just wanted to say that I won't have anything to add to this.
Okay, okay, good. Very good.
Good.
I feel good about it. This is good to know. What else are we left with in terms of reviewing on this, on this? Well, we'll need time to digest it over the next month, but we can certainly be on the docket for next month. And make a determination at that point.
And when can they go to ALV? Just to expedite.
I'm going to file the ALV application tomorrow now that we have all of our plans in order. And all of SoundSense.
So you can do that in conjunction?
They only need less than a month.
So it doesn't hold you up?
Perfect, perfect. Good.
Thanks. And again, all I would ask, and Kathy probably knows this, I'm sure, is to make all of the condition, all of the recommendations, conditions of approval, just to make sure we have them on the site plan in case something's lost.
Good idea. Okay, that's a good idea. Thank you, thank you, Tiffany. And thank you, library, for working on this. It's, I'm glad this has been resolved.
Yeah.
And it'll be continued next month. Do I need to, do I need a?
Motion or anything? It's just work session.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Grania.
Second.
Thank you, Ron, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
That'll be next month. What's the date next month?
The next meeting, the record is September 24th.
September 24th. And while we're on the, discussing dates, I heard Tiffany that you brought up, thank you for looking at that. She's thoughtful enough to look ahead at the calendar and we have to adjust some of the dates around the holidays because I think, I'm not sure what dates they fall on, but apparently it's problematic. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. We're talking about like, you know, end of the year.
Oh, the November, Thanksgiving and December, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll work on that in the next couple of days and we'll, we'll circulate some different ideas. And thank you for that, Tiffany. Okay, let's move on to item number two, which is page main LLC. Larry recused himself from this, so he leaves the room.
We have John Ellsworth from NPB on Zoom to help with this secret.
Fantastic, yeah. So this has been going up for quite a while. It's an application for, but change, it's a change of use essentially for the second floor apartment into an expansion of the restaurant. So we've been discussing that. There's, we have SECRE, we have, we have been in the midst of SECRE, but we have not made a determination of that yet. I think we're prepared to do that tonight, which would be a big step forward. So that's, that's where we'll go with that. Do you want to?
Yeah, I just think, I mean, so time to walk it through.
Yeah.
But we did, we reviewed part one, EAF, which is the basic information. And then we prepared part two, which is the identification of potential impacts. And then from there, we we prepared a part three, which is an evaluation of magnitude impacts, and we go through the resource areas. So John, John was going to leave his room, what was written up. But also there's some special considerations with this project that needs to be included in that evaluation.
Okay.
John, you ready to talk?
Okay, yes, I am. Good evening, members of board, Mr. Chairman. And I believe you've done the SECRE review before, so the paperwork in general should be familiar with you, but I'll walk you through it. As Kathy mentioned, the applicant completed part one of the environmental assessment form, EAF. So we reviewed that in addition to the other documents that were submitted with the application, the site plan, the application itself. And then the first thing we do is we go through the part two, which is a checklist to try to identify areas of potential environmental concern. And it's a 10-page form, I believe, and there are 18 parameters that are considered. And if you check any of them as, yes, there's a potential for impacts. And then you check the rightmost column, that there's a moderate to large impact, that suggests that you may have to take additional look at mitigating those impacts. So we went through on the checklist, most of them were checked no. And I'll go through in detail on each of the 18 parameters when we get to the part three, because that contains the analysis. And then for the ones, and there were only a handful of the 18 parameters that we checked, yes, none of them, because of, it's a relatively small project, it's permitted uses that you're considering and other details. None of the potential impacts, where we did check yes, that there may be a potential impact, none of them did we determine that, that there is a moderate or large impact. And ultimately, it's the board's decision as to whether we are recommendation on those matters is correct. So that is the first part of the form that you have. Then the part three is, the form itself is just a two-page form. And it contains our recommendation for, it is a type one action. It is on the list of type one actions, so the applicant had to fill out a, what's known as a full EAF and for the parts two, a fully EAF for part one. And for part two and three, we also completed the full EAF. And then the recommendation is that, what's known as a negative declaration. So at the end of our analysis, the conclusion that we're recommending is that there's not a potential for significant impacts. There can be little impacts and it's kind of subjective as to whether impacts is are significant or not. But in this case, again, because of the magnitude of what they're proposing, our recommendation is that is below that threshold. So the meat of this whole analysis is at the end, it's the attachment to the part three, which goes through in detail. It describes the proposed action, a little bit of history that the chairman alluded to previously. And what they're actually proposing in terms of the conversion of the upstairs from a residential apartment to additional restaurant space. And then basically formalizing what was the understanding about the back page being a waiting area for people who would be patronizing the restaurant, would be sitting at the restaurant later on. for people who would be patronizing the restaurant, would be sitting at the restaurant later on. So that's the first page. And then on the second page of the part two, of the part three attachment, we have a list of basically understandings which can be considered conditions for the, if the board decides that to consider approval, approving the project. These are the, kind of like the understandings of things that would mitigate any potential impacts. So those are the bullet points on page two. And just go through those briefly because those are important. Waiting area comprising back page is accessory to the restaurant use and, as currently proposed and previously proved, does not trigger the need for additional parking spaces. Second, back page will be used as a waiting area for patrons attending the restaurant while they wait for their assigned table. Persons may approach the bar area and get a food or drink, but no wait service is permitted at the back page. Back page will not be used for events where people gather to celebrate and eat food, even if they are set up as buffet service events. The main intent and purpose, again, based on the 2015 planning board approval, was to limit the use of the back page as just a waiting area for those patrons waiting for a table to ensure additional restaurant seating was not created, which would trigger additional parking requirements. Fourth, back page shall not be used as an after-hour bar for people to congregate after the restaurant stops serving food. Rather, back page was only authorized to be used as a waiting area for those customers waiting for a table to dine at the main restaurant. As such, the back page will close when the kitchen closes at 10:00 PM. And finally, should the applicant seek to amend the above conditions that will be made, conditions of any final planning approval for this site, either to expand the restaurant, use to include the back page, establish table service or hold events in back page, an application to the planning board shall be required. And the application will trigger additional parking requirements that will require a parking variance from the zoning board. Because the current application is right at the allowable, the required parking for the development that's proposed under the site plan. Going through each of the parameters, impact on land, since there's no disturbance, land disturbance proposed under the, the application, there will be no impacts on land. Geological features that pertains to things like cliffs and dunes and caves, so that's not applicable here. Impact on surface water, the property doesn't contain surface waters or wetlands and is not proximate to them, so there'll be no impacts. Groundwater, the main thing is that the property will be connected to the municipal sewer system, so you won't have sewage discharged to the ground, so there'll be no impact on groundwater quality. Impact on flooding, the fifth parameter, subject property is located within a designated flood plain or floodway. However, no significant alterations to the building are proposed in terms of what's at ground level. They're doing a little bit of modification upstairs. They're expanding for, I believe, a hydroponic garden and a walk-in refrigerator. But that's on the second floor. Impacts to air resources, the proposed action does not involve uses that are significant generator of air emissions. The expanded restaurant use. Impact on plants and animals, number seven out of 18. It's, the site's fully developed, so it doesn't contain significant ecological resources, so there won't be any impact on those resources. Eight, agricultural resources, this is not a site with agricultural soils that should be preserved. Aesthetics, the exposed expansion is at the rear of the building and on the upper floor, so it's not going to have a significant impact on aesthetic resources. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. The site is listed as a contributing structure within the Sag Harbor Historic District. However, since the proposed action does not involve substantial exterior modifications, there are no significant adverse effects anticipated. This is the analysis for SECRE. As to whether there's a significant impact or not, obviously, this will have to go to the Board of Architectural Review for their determination on the details of the exterior modifications. Impact on open space and recreation, this site is not an open space or recreational resource and it will not generate a additional demand on such resources. Critical environmental area, the villages adjoins the Peconic Bay and environs. Critical environmental area, but given the site's distance from the bay and the relatively minor nature of the proposed action, there will be no impacts on the CEA. Thirteen, transportation, this is the largest write-up in the attachment. Excuse me, the conversion of the second floor three-bedroom residential apartment to additional restaurant space for 35 patron seats will not, there'll be a small increase in traffic, but will not, again, the threshold for SECRE is a significant increase. And the proposal for back page is to lock it in as a, what it was intended in the 2015 approval as a waiting area for patrons, so it's not going to generate additional traffic. The proposed conversion of an apartment to add 39 restaurant seats does not require additional parking stall. And that's based on the Board of Trustees amending the code back in 2014 to modify the requirement for restaurants. Previously, the requirement was one stall for every three restaurant seats and they changed that to one stall for every four seats. So that created an allowance of one additional seat per three existing seats, just based on the code change. So the, the proposal for the upstairs restaurant experience, expansion is staying within what that allowance is under the code modification. As noted, back page will only be used as a waiting area for patrons of the restaurants. And as such, it's an accessory use to the restaurant. So overall, the proposed action, including the conversion of the second floor apartment to additional restaurant space, will not trigger the need for additional parking spaces. Or require a zoning, zoning board of appeals approval for the parking. It's my understanding they may need some other dimensional relief. Impact on energy, based on the relatively minor nature of the modification, even though it will require additional energy, it's going to be relatively small. Number 16, getting to the end of the list, expansion of the restaurant use involved in the proposed action. A restaurant expansion does not pose a potential for human health impacts. Consistency with community plans, number 17. The proposal does call for an existing apartment to be swapped out for additional restaurant space, which conflicts with one aspect of the 2008 strategy plans. However, both of the uses, the restaurant use that's being expanded is permissible, is a permitted use in the business district. And that is in accordance with the overall community plan embodied in the zoning code, which is part of the village's comprehensive plan. And finally, number 18, consistency with community character. Minimal exterior alterations to the building occurring under the proposed action will not significantly alter the existing character of the site in the context of the surrounding neighborhood. So that is the, that, those are the details of the analysis that we performed for your consideration and determination as to whether you agree that the proposed, that this application will not result in potentially significant impacts. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them now.
Thank you, John. You folks have any questions about this? Just for clarification, so it was a little, took me a while to understand this better. We're doing, we're reviewing and talking about SECRE right now. This will go on, this, this application will, when we're done with the SECRE portion, and Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, it will go to the Harvard Committee, it will go to the zoning board.
It goes to ZBA.
Okay, then it will come back to us.
Yeah, you can't move it until it's got ZBA.
Yeah, so we're not doing site plan approval right now.
So the only action today is the negative declaration?
Correct, correct. Right, so there'll be, there'll be more discussion of a lot of the things that John just said, including the, the items that were listed in the addendum to part three. But we'll cross that bridge then, is the way I understand it. Good. Kathy, have any, anything to add? Okay. Does the applicant have anything to say?
So Kathy prepared a resolution.
Do we have the resolution? Thank you. Right. This is a resolution adopting a SECRE determination. And the question, one question I have is, part of this is said, whereas the applicant has modified the site plan to clarify the proposed use of the outdoor area known as back page. Has
I don't think they've done that yet, have they, Kathy?
No.
Strike that, yeah, strike that sentence.
Okay.
Sorry. Or you could say they will be.
Yeah, whereas the applicant will, will modify the set plan.
And then you'd be adopting the resolution as amended.
Wonderful, good, okay. So I'll just read that, so you know what I just wrote. Whereas the applicant will modify the site plan to clarify the proposed use of the outdoor area known as back page as a waiting area which allowed the completion of the EAF part two and EAF part three, which supports the adoption of a negative declaration and therefore be resolved as planning board finds the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and thereby adopts a negative declaration pursuant to SECRE. Sound okay? Good. Good, you guys? All right. If it was okay with that, as amended, I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous, with the four of us here. Good. Thank you, John.
Good, thank you. Have a good night.
And Doris, I have this here for you, need me to sign it or we need to adjust it and then I sign it? I'm not sure how that works.
Negative declaration too.
Okay. We'll do that after, after the meeting. Great. Welcome back, Larry.
I need to sign your report.
Yeah, you do as well, okay. We'll do that after, after the meeting.
The board is, you should send the copy of the negative declaration to ZBA.
You could.
Yeah. May I have the, yeah, I have to send it to DC as well.
Okay, great. Let's move on to number, are we ready to move on? Liz and Kathy, number, number three is 25 Meadow Street. We are here tonight to schedule a pre-submission conference for an application for 25 Meadow Street. So that would, that's a public hearing, has to be, has to be noticed. And the idea is that we would schedule it tonight for next month's monthly meeting. So I don't think there's anyone here from the applicant tonight unless they are. But I think we can go ahead and schedule it for next month if everyone agrees. You've seen, you've seen the, some of the paperwork come in, at least digitally, I'm not sure if you saw it otherwise. Good. So I need a motion to schedule a pre-submission conference for 25 Meadow Street for the September meeting.
Some of.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I did.
Good. Excellent. And we can move on to number four. Item number four, which is also, it's 203 Madison Street. Scheduling a pre-submission conference for 203 Madison Street. Same exact issue. I don't think anyone's here from 203 Madison Street tonight. No need for it.
Here for something else.
Okay, yeah, okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, good. Yeah, so we'll, we can schedule it tonight for next month and, and we'll, and we'll discuss it then. But it's our job tonight to get it on the calendar for next month. So I would accept a motion to schedule a pre-submission conference for the September meeting.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Good.
So both have patience for Yes, and then we'll, yeah, we'll publish those as for pre-submit.
Right. Right. And the idea, just to remind people everywhere, is that it gives us a chance to see what they're suggesting that they do. It gives them a chance to hear our feedback. It's also a public hearing, so it gives an opportunity for the public to weigh in and see what they're talking about and have some comments themselves. So it's a useful, relatively new thing we're doing here. Let's move over to part number four, discussion items. Number one is 112 Hampton Street, Paul Babcock. Babcock. Hi, Paul. Come on up to the podium as you would. Introduce yourself. And I guess you have to give your address again, please.
My name is Paul Babcock. I live in Freedom Brookway, North Haven.
Hi, Paul. Thanks for coming in. And you have a property on the corner of Jermaine and 114.
That's right, 112 Hampton.
Right. Good. And I saw your application, so this is a discussion issue tonight, so there's nothing.
As we look forward in planning, you know, we try and figure things out.
Yeah.
Looking for some guidance.
Great.
Some sense of sensibility to the property itself, what it could, what it could not be in its essence. This is one thing that appears to me to be of decency and, as one would say, addition to the community without taking away any, any environmental things like parking, whatever. It seems like it's reasonable, purely common sense, if you will. So I'm here for your, your input, wisdom and what you see.
Well, tell us, if you want to explain to us what you, I've read the paperwork, but if you want to just tell us. I think you want to, it's a change of views essentially, right? For retail.
Yeah, what I have now there is a usage of retail and office space, all right? And with the Pilates, I don't know quite where that falls in the grand scheme of things. I do know practically speaking on the property, it falls within the least impact that I've probably had on the property in terms of parking, in terms of coming and going. The operation is normally all over with by one o'clock, two o'clock. And there's a demand for that type of physical exercise. Pilates itself is extremely good for one's physique, mind, et cetera, done correctly. All right, so, so when I put all this together, I'm saying, you know, maybe this is some reasonable business solution, neighborhood solution to a number of things that you people consider every day. So my question was, as I examined or tried to figure it out, if I do get a CO for Pilate Studio, can I revert back to the CO for retail and/or office space?
If it comes, becomes a time that the Pilates needs to move on or whatever happens.
Yes, I think it depends with the property zone, which I believe is Zone R20.
I'm sorry.
Because the property is Zone R20.
Oh, yes.
So yeah, Zone R20, we have to go and see what the uses are, what the uses. So yeah, zone R twenty, we have to go and see what the uses are, whether the uses there were permitted under the code or whether they were pre-existing non-conforming uses, which can be abandoned if you don't use them for a certain period of time.
Right.
In R twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's something you'd have to examine and see whether you'd want to allow Pilates to be, to continue without the retail continuing, you could abandon that use if it's pre, if it's pre-existing non-conforming under the code. That's an issue, correct?
And you're, you're looking at that space, just the ground floor retail space that you have, right? The ground floor retail that's currently there, that's the space you're looking for?
Right.
Okay, yeah, it's like, how many square feet is that space?
Just under a thousand.
Yeah.
More than ample parking back, of course you got Hampton Street, so there's forty there, street shoulder another forty, so it, the, the parking really isn't an issue. And that's why considering, if possible, a change of CO. Unless Pilates comes under some sort of.
Permitted use, yeah. I don't know if Pilates is permitted in R twenty. Maybe it is, I'd have to look.
You had a, you had a, an outlet store, some description, I can't even tell you what it was, was it like a use, it was like high end sort of thrift recently or clothing or there was something there until not long ago.
Mind offline and the intent of that was little, gets people's mind out of the computer, out, out of.
That's right.
Et cetera, and she's moving on. Couldn't find the help really to do it correctly, she's busy in other avenues to other places, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so one of the things, you know, you, you look at, at a business property and the turnover happens for a number of reasons.
Sure.
And, but I saw this or see this as one way of maybe stabilizing the income for the product.
Yeah, well, I remember not so, maybe it was a while ago, several years ago, there was a Buddhist bookstore there. And it was, it was a Buddhist bookstore, but they also had some, like, they would have some, you know, meetings, I guess, I don't know what one would call it, but as I, I wasn't in this capacity then, but I remember being deemed retail, at least in some capacity, because of, I'm not sure how, how it worked out, but. Might have to look back at that and how that worked, I'm like, I don't know, but I do remember that.
But maybe they sold books and it was an accessory meeting space.
Maybe that's what it was, yeah.
Well, is it, there's a Pilates studio in the village now, is that a different zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, some business.
That's in the business district.
Under your office, yeah, yeah.
So we just have to see what Pilates use is, right?
Yeah, and also, well, it depends, if he wants to continue the Pilates use, then he can continue it if he already has it there, right? And he's been operating legally there, that's fine, but if he wants to switch it to or, or expand a retail use that hasn't been abandoned, that's an issue, you, you would want to make sure, first of all, your use has not been abandoned, but then there's all these restrictions on expanding a pre-existing non-conforming use. Because the code and, and the law really sort of works against pre-existing non-conforming uses, which actually makes them so valuable, right? Because R twenty is meant and intended to be for residences, but obviously this is probably the business use since prior to zoning, so that's the issue, right? It's how to balance that and make sure that you didn't abandon any use when you changed Pilates, I guess.
Well, he hasn't changed it, yeah, that's these.
It's not, it's not.
That's what he's here to talk about. But, but you want to know the risk of, if you switch to Pilates, then you don't have retail use in the future.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, 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 I'm guessing your question is really if you switch to Pilates, do you risk losing your retail?
The answer is yes.
Right, that's the.
You don't want to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Well, unless Pilates is the path forward for the property.
But it would.
It seems like, well, what is the Pilates use, is it not retail? That's, that's really the question.
Yeah, that's what you have to look at.
Right.
Right.
If Pilates fall under the retail use of business district.
Right, which it might.
If the use is still here, here in the business district, if it falls in those categories, then it should be the same category.
He's not in the business district, he's in R twenty.
No, no, I know, but if it falls into the retail bucket of.
Oh, right, I see, so it's defined.
To get Pilates as a retail, you might not need a change of use at all.
And is this a private Pilates studio, it's not, I mean, obviously with that square footage, you're not doing large classes.
No, the, the, it's, it's private in the sense it's by appointment only, all right, for an hour and then the customer leaves.
Right.
Then another will come in.
Right, I mean, if it's an individual Pilates class, it's not exactly a gym.
Right.
Right.
Could it, could it be considered?
I know Pilates is different in.
Pilates is a whole other thing, it's much more disciplined.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I'm familiar with it, but I'm just trying to think of, you know, is, could it be considered retail with an accessory if it's a one individual appointment at a time rather than, you know, a gym use is there somewhere in the. It's not retail use.
What have you, what have you sold?
Pilates books.
Outfits.
Yeah.
And Pilates.
It sounds like. I mean, because it sounds like maybe the Buddhist bookstore was something along those lines.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which was there for years, the Buddhist bookstore, quite a few years, successfully.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's normally prohibited in R twenty, there's no bookstore permitted in R twenty, so that's a great, that's retail, so you have, you have retail established, yeah.
That's retail, yeah.
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 I'm just looking for.
Paul, could you clarify something for me, I'm reading your.
Is prohibited in R twenty.
What is?
What is?
Fitness center is prohibited in R twenty.
I don't think it's defined, right, they don't even define fitness center, but.
It says fitness center gym and then there's, and there's, yeah, there's a use code, so we would have to go to the. They may use either SIC or NC, whatever, NAICS. So we have to look up the NAICS code Kathy and see whether the number next to the use code includes Pilates, which I imagine the fitness center would include Pilates, right? It's a type of fitness.
Although I can.
It's one on one.
The chances we would have on even.
I mean, wouldn't it be almost, if it's one on one, wouldn't it be almost a more akin to a service?
Right.
Rather than a.
Like massage therapy or something.
Yeah.
I can look there. Like personal, personal service.
Or a psychiatrist's office.
That's a different category also from retail, so going back to retail in the, in the future.
But does, does R twenty also have?
Service massage therapy is also prohibited in R twenty.
And it's not retail.
It's not retail, it's a service use, but.
What's the office space? Usage, is that pre-existing non-conforming office usage?
In, in R twenty?
Yeah.
Let me look. Offices are generally prohibited in R twenty. Medical offices are permitted by special exception.
Oh. Oh, medical office.
Law offices as well.
Yeah.
If you have a pre-existing non-conforming use that doesn't, it's not permitted, but you've had it established, you can continue it, you have a legal right to continue that use.
For sure.
But it sounds like you might not be allowed to change it, like regardless of what we think.
Well, no, some municipalities allow a change from one non-conforming use to another, and I think this one does as well, right Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a section, you go to ZBA.
Yeah.
And it's a change from one non-conforming use to another, then it could, it's in the code. So, but, but it would be changing the use, so.
Right.
Once you change it, I don't think you get to.
Change it back.
No, you, you couldn't.
You could, you could, it's, it's been done.
They have to do all those.
But you don't have that, that pre-existing non-conforming right, which is really valuable to continue the retail once you give it up, that's my point. But there's a section in the code, why don't, why don't you give me your email, I'll send it to you. On that door, or something, contact Doris, and I'll send you that section of the code so you can look at it with your attorney. I decided that's something you want to pursue, change from one non-conforming use to another, okay, all right? And you can look at the standards and see if you, if something you'd want to pursue.
Paul, can I ask you, you wrote something in the application that I, I couldn't, I couldn't read your handwriting, I'm part of it, your handwriting is better than mine, so it's, you're pretty good. It, the people come in on one on one for hourly, is that what it was, you said, you said X number of people per hour. I, I read it saying seven one hour client sessions per hour, but I think that.
You know, they come in for a singular session at one hour.
I see.
And, and the building has a capacity, you know, roughly eight to nine individuals in there for one time if that did happen.
Yeah.
And, and more than ample parking to address that, but that's kind of the flow of how.
Got it, they come in, they come in and they, for an hour-ish and then they leave and the other person comes in. Yeah, there might be an overlap by a couple bit, they'll come in, yeah. Yeah, no, you have, you have perfect parking number in the rear there, that seems perfectly fine for that. Yeah. Yeah.
It's really a zoning board question, Liz, right?
Let me just check, it's three hundred dash twelve point six, I think. I just want to see. I want to see which board issues these changes, I think it's ZBA, usually it's ZBA.
I, I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, but you would still have to come to this board, obviously if you're changing the use and it triggers parking changes, then we'd come back here for a second.
But the changing use means you lose the non-conforming pre-existing?
No, it would become, it would become, if you lose the retail, it would, it would go from retail to something else. Yeah.
So you would have to look, think into the future as to whether if, if you would not be able to meet these standards in the future if you were to go from Pilates back to retail, say in the future, that it may trigger, it may not work out, it might be fine going from retail to Pilates is, you know, less intensive.
It's less intensive, yeah, but it might not make it back.
In other words, it might be very difficult to come to get.
Exactly, so it's, yes, Village Code section three hundred dash twelve point six. B. Three. Thirty-three, and those are the standards. And it's to change a non-conforming use, you go to ZBA and then ZBA has to find that a change will not be the introduction of an undesirable use in the neighborhood, that the owner is without any reasonable alternative, that the owner's hardship is unique, changing use will not cause or result in a detriment of any kind in your own properties, the owner's difficulty is not self-created, the grant of any change of use will not adversely change the existing character in the area, and the new use will not be an intensification of the use. Such changes may be subject to reasonable conditions for appeals, and the owner shall report appeals proof any application of change in non-conforming use to the cabaret, discount, or superstore. Any application under this subsection shall require the notice of here to be provided by the applicant. In sentence sentence, she'll be getting to all owners within a five hundred foot radius, so there's an increased notice requirement to. Those are the standards.
Yeah.
Well, so it's not impossible to change things from one non-conforming use to another.
So, with your office giving you a list of.
That's all in the code.
It's all in the code?
Yeah, all the permitted uses are in the code. I can give it to Doris, so she'll send it to you.
That'd be good, yeah, yeah, so it's doable, I, I think it, it, to boil it down, it sounds like one could pursue changing the, and request the change in, in use. If you just read you, what would, they would, they would, the zoning board would look at those specific standards and assess it.
You can want to consult with your land use attorney to see if this is something, you know, event all possible outcomes, to see if it's something you want to pursue, but I'll send the, the section to Doris.
Liz, is it possible that he could add a use to the property without abandoning the retail use? Could add a non-conforming use to that existing non-conforming property?
Uses that are not permitted, unless you change the existing non-conforming use together. And you need those.
But this change isn't going to affect his non-conforming use of the office space that exists as well?
No, it would just be for.
Just for that one.
Area that you're proposing to change. Right?
Right.
And what's the definition of medical office? I mean, if it's a singular appointment, that's very similar to a.
Right.
A doctor's visit.
Well, I don't think Pilates could ever be considered a doctor. It would be more like you said, massage.
It could be considered physical therapy.
Physical therapy.
Oh, yes.
I think that some of them are categorized as physical therapy, so.
Injuries.
Right.
All right, what that may make.
Yeah, I mean, if, because that's a permitted use.
There you go.
Definitions.
It's physical therapy.
It's not in here, so. It gets under office, hold on. So you have to again look up that code, that special code to get the full breadth of the definition.
Right. In case there was an ability to use that, then you wouldn't have to change the use, so you wouldn't risk losing your retail in the future.
That code will define what is permitted under that specific definition of medical office.
Where, where does one find that?
That's, it's, it's in the, the use table, has it the code?
In, in the village code?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's online.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a use for New York State. By foot seats. For this package.
All those things, okay. Does any of this help you at all or give you any ideas, I mean, it's, it's a.
Lot more thoughts, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, do, do you have someone in mind to, to move in now, a Pilates person?
Yeah, I have someone who's of good caliber, that, that would run, run the business properly, been there a long time, teaches Pilates properly, you know, it could be considered a, certainly addressing medical, medical conditions, you know, in a preventative sense, for sure, and also rehab.
Sure.
But, yeah, the, how about the, the property as a, in total, going a little bit further, you know, a health center or healthcare center?
Well, medical offices are permitted by special exception.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to do medical offices, you know, you look up that code, see if that's sort of under the same umbrella and then can see that's something that you can come back and meet the special exception standards for medical office with this, with this board, I'll just leave this for.
Liz, I have a question, it's, it's a, the, the building is mixed use, right, I mean, there are, there's, there's the. There's apartments in there, is that correct?
Two apartments to the right.
Yeah, in, in the, in, that's right, okay.
Definitely, that section is single, separate.
That's right.
And then the office space is separate.
Yes.
But it's all pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
As a mixed use building. That's the, that's where we come into your only time to switch, not add use, it's a question for the ZBA, it sounds like. Of what you would like to do there. I don't think anyone here is necessarily opposed to Pilates, but it's, it's really, it's like a question for the zoning board, it sounds like. And, and what you want to do with it, and what you're willing to give up to get that.
All right.
There's no limit up, up in the for uses. At least in the business district, is there one in the, in R twenty Kathy? I am not aware of one. Yeah, it's really missing the code.
Yeah.
Like, there's no limit on the for uses per square foot of commercial, which is in every other code I've seen.
So.
But in R twenty, there's only, there's only so many permissible uses.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is use too, yeah.
So.
Oh, there's not, not interesting.
Yeah.
But medical use is a special permission, special exception?
Medical office is, is permitted by special exception.
Right.
Use, so a special exception use permit from this board is to come in with a site plan and a petition showing he meets all the standards in the special exception use standards for the code for medical offices. And then if he does, then your off, your board is empowered to issue that permitted use and the, and the site plan approval limit.
Okay.
That's different than a change from one non-conforming use to another.
Right.
Okay. That's intriguing. I would, I would recommend talking to an attorney who.
Yeah, to look at that code.
Sit down with you and, and, and think about the different possible ways you could approach this if you really wanted to go in that direction. Because these sound like they're possible. Uh, cause these sound like they're possible things you could go down the different avenues and try or think about it at least.
Yeah, and also make sure you're protection, you're protecting your property rights.
That's right.
Right, you don't wanna lose something.
Yeah.
Here to do that, right? I'm in, I'm not, I represent the village.
Okay.
Right, right.
Can we say to be continued?
Absolutely, and and you're welcome to come back here anytime if you have more questions or you wanna like pass something else by us. I I appreciate that you came in. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Nice to meet you. Okay. That was Paul Beppe. So next is number two of Jeff Jeff Sharon. Hello.
Hi.
Three and eleven Madison Street.
My name is Jeff Sharon, I'm at nineteen Robeson Boulevard. Uh, here to present a development concept on the properties three dash eleven Madison. Serving as an advisor, uh, to the property owners and in wanting to understand the development potential for the property. We, uh, reached out to Anthony Romanwell for his expertise in these principles. Into Sag Harbor, uh, heritage and historic nature. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to him and show what we've, uh, are 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 seeking your feedback and guidance on, uh. Future, potential future.
Doris, few people to, um, probably do the outside.
Specifically for day two.
Are you putting things up on on the?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna attempt to. If not, I have the hard copies here, but I went like to try.
That'd be nice, that'd be nice, that'd be nice.
Anthony Berdewa sixty-eight, uh, Union Street, Sag Harbor. Uh, so, yeah, so we're here tonight, uh, really is just a very initial introduction to these, uh, two properties. Uh, really, we're, myself and the property owners are still in the stage where we ourselves are still brainstorming, uh, concepts for these pro- uh, properties. Um, so nothing here is written, it's going for for sure. Uh, we're seeking feedback here from this board and also. Um, eventually from the architectural review board before we go too far and too deep into this. So what I'd like to do is maybe start by describing, um, the existing conditions of both, um, both, uh, properties. So I'm gonna start with, um, oh, why don't we, so we can get the screen up, but I'm sure we've. Uh, well, know both, uh, properties here. So there you've got number three, which used to be the Christie's Building, and now it's a love love shack fancy. And you've got number eleven, which has gone through multiple iterations over the years, but currently it is still in on the ground floor. And two apartments on the first and second floor. Just to the, just to start here for nomenclature, I'm going to refer to what's on the the main street level as. Round floor, what is the second floor on Main Street, but the first floor, uh, facing Church Street is the first floor, then second. Okay.
What's wrong? Is that, is that A one?
Um, should be next one, I think.
Village Business.
Alright, so, um, it's again, I'm just gonna describe what the, what's current conditions are. I'm gonna start with number eleven, cause I think it's the simpler of the two buildings. Uh, number eleven has, once again, retail on the, uh, ground floor, about twelve hundred square foot retail on the ground floor currently doing.
I'm sorry, eleven A one, are you on that one?
And Jeff, could you just turn that a little bit the other way? I think this 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 woman here is is trying to glance it, and we can see it as well, because as as long as. Maybe we both can, perhaps.
Yeah, so, uh, number eleven, doing, um, currently twelve hundred square foot of retail on the ground level. Uh, first floor is twelve hundred square foot, two bedroom apartment. Uh, the third, uh, second floor, which is the the dormers there, is a, um, I think it's about eight hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment. Um, the back there, uh, there are no accessory buildings in the structure at the very rear of the property facing, um. Facing Church Street, there's, uh, I would say three and a half parking spots, a little parking area, three and a half parking spots. Only no other structure, uh, structures on the property. Number three, which is, um, um. The, this, uh, this building, um, is currently, uh, about twenty-five hundred square foot of retail on the ground floor. Goes on, I'll show you the building, uh, the prop, um, site section in a moment, but it goes kind of underground.
Yep.
Into that property. The second of the, the first and second floor of number three, uh, even back when it was the Christie's Building, and I've I've been in it when it was under the, uh, Christie's Building. It's always been a little bit ambiguous as to exactly where the retail aspect of it ended and the apartment aspect of it began.
Yeah.
But, uh, but for for the sake of argument here, we're gonna say one, uh, some retail and a one bedroom apartment on the first floor. And a, uh, studio apartment on the, um, second floor. So, uh, that's, uh, and then it behind, um, the main building, um, there is, um, a, um. There are two heavily dilapidated, um, accessory structures, uh, that look like they're both basically just hobbled together over the years. And they're kind of in the state of falling apart. Um, there's parking, um, depending on whether or not there are dumpsters in the driveway, there's maybe parking for two to four cars on number, uh, number three. Um, so that's, uh, that's where we're, that's where the existing, um, stages are. So once again here, just kind of brainstorming some ideas, uh. Go back to the front page, sorry, we don't have the, well, I guess we could, uh, we could have.
Hey, each one just open, we're going to page.
Okay, alright, well, I'm I'm just gonna do it like this, then it's probably easier for everyone.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, site, site plan here, um, so this is exist, dark, dark hatch here is, um, number eleven. Um, existing in our catch here, number three existing, you can see the outline of the two, um, dilapidated, um, accessory structures here. There's an, um, deck with the retail underneath it, um, I'm just showing you that site.
Oh, that's one, we got it up there, so it's one that.
I guess we, we, actually, you know what, just leave this one up right now, I think.
Yes, good to see.
And the rest I can just do this way. Um, so, you know, just once again, just to show you how these site sections work. Um, this is number eleven here, here's Main Street down here, number eleven is actually a little bit lower than Main Street on its ground level. Property slight slopes up slightly towards Church Street, um. And then number three here, you've got, once again, Main Street level, this is where this, um, uh, ground floor retail extends underground underneath, underneath that deck. Um, uh, first and second floor, here the property actually slopes down slightly, uh, towards, um, Church Street. Okay, so that is the site section. So here, kind of just giving some concepts here, you know, we're we're trying to find a balance here between, quite frankly, what's gonna generate some revenue. And secondly, what's gonna be something that will contribute to the, uh, to the village. So our thought right now is, um, adding on a, um, approximately one thousand one hundred square foot. Uh, addition off the back of the deck of number three, uh, potentially for a rest, a small restaurant space. Uh, we're looking at maybe thirty to forty seats or so. Reason why we're not building out over the deck here is one of the things that is important for us here is to sort of minimize disruption to the existing, uh, tenants during construction. Um, it's not just to be frankly, not just to be nice to the tenants, it's also because, you know, we don't wanna lose. Uh, use of a, of a valuable retail space for a year while we're under construction. So that was the thought of adding on the back here rather than on top of the deck. Number eleven, what we're thinking about doing here is also an addition off the rear. We were originally thinking about pushing it over to the south, but there's actually a very nice little porch and garden area here that we wanna preserve. So we're actually gonna try to shift this as far as possible to the north now. And what we'd like to do there is, um, four apartments, um, four studio apartments. We're gonna keep the, um. The existing buildings essentially exactly as they are. Ground floor number eleven will remain retail, first floor of number eleven and second floor number eleven will remain apartments. Uh, same thing with number three, maybe a little bit of of adjusting here. Once again, you know, it's it's always been a little bit ambiguous where office retail ends on the first floor and apartment begins. So we may make some adjustments with that, but essentially keeping two apartments in number three as well. Parking, okay, so we actually have quite a bit of room here theoretically for for, um, adding additional parking spots. I mean, we're looking at like potentially as much as fifteen to sixteen spots total on the property, including ADUs. A couple of ADA spots. Even though the two properties are single and separate currently, we're trying to, we're conceiving these as as a single unit and how everything would work with the parking here. With this sort of, um, entrance off of, um, off of, um, Church Street. You saw the topography before with this property soaking up and this property soaking down, so it's gonna be a little bit of a try, uh, of a tricky thing to make the grading work there. And 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 that sort of thing. I, looking at it a little bit more since I did the initial submission, I think we could probably do it without needing to do any retaining walls. Um, I don't wanna commit to that yet, but we'll, we're, you know, obviously wanna do that, uh, you know, minimize amount of of site work here as well. Thinking the parking is going to be some kind of pervious material, you know, gravel, um, sort of thing, you know, it's it's, um. Presumably going to be used mostly by the tenants of the apartments and maybe some of the staff of the stores. And most people using the restaurant will probably just park on either Madison Street or, um, Church Street. Uh, there's actually this kind of nice little alleyway here, and the thought is to kind of develop this into a kind of a sweet little alley, leading from up the stairs to. On on Main Street to this, uh, restaurant structure in the rear. Will obviously need for AD, ADU purposes and whatnot, will need to prep, um, ADA, um, ADA spot in the, uh. In the back there, ADA, ADA entrance in the back. So, uh, that's kind of where we're at at this, at this, uh, very literary stage.
Okay. I have a lot of questions. Um, one would be, uh, I'll start with with the, uh, the apartments. Are you considering, are you thinking of them as being, uh, market rate apartments or accessory workforce housing apartments or?
Yeah, here's where it gets a little bit crazy with village politics.
Yeah.
Sag Sag Harbor, um, you know, we had that, that, um, workforce housing law that was passed. And then turned over in port.
Yeah.
So. Right now, um, I I I think that, you know, this would have, if that law had stood, this would have been like the perfect kind of candidate for that, that new law. But it's been overturned in the village business district, so I think we're still limited by the current code for, um. For apartments in the village business district, which I think correctly, if I'm wrong, uh, Liz, is twelve hundred square feet, right?
Like seventeen, some seventy-two hundred square, one apartment for seventy-two hundred square feet, Kathy?
One area, yes.
Yeah.
In the in the business district, yeah.
It's one apartment permitted per seventy-two hundred square feet of of area, property area.
Right, okay.
So I I think the 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 thing, yeah, I mean, I've been trying to sort this out myself, but I think. Ironically enough, I think the one thing that we might need in area variance here is for the apartments. So, uh, we're actually gonna conform to setbacks easily. We're gonna conform to law coverage, it's, uh, um, easily.
So, but to answer your question.
I thought we were meeting, so B B, this is, this is B B, so I believe that the number of accessory apartments is limited per site. I have to look, though.
Okay.
Because if OD, you can have an apartment building and it's one apartment per every certain.
That's the office district, yeah, yeah.
We're not, not married to market rate or.
Funny.
That's, that's.
Okay.
Certainly, that's something we're gonna.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And I also wanna emphasize, you know, we're keeping the apart, existing apartments, so there'll be, you know, we're hoping at now increased apartments on this.
And 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 you just mentioned that that building on number eleven, I think it is, the the addition would be, uh, you have setbacks and such, um, that's fine.
It, number eleven's gonna be a little bit tricky architecturally to add on to that building. And the reason why we need to add on to it and not do a separate structure is if it's a separate structure, it becomes an accessory building and there are height limitations. So we need to kind of do like a minimal connection between the the addition and the existing building. So it's gonna be a little bit tricky to figure that out, but, um, you know, I I think we can, we can do.
Let me ask you this, cause everything was popping in my head. You you present, not shown on there is the existing, um. Grecian columned, falling down garage building, um, which is pre-existing nonconforming, obviously. And and then you also have what what you're calling the deck, which I call a foundation. They, those are both pre-existing, was there any thought to to using those footprints and and working with what exists now? To save yourself from zoning problems?
Okay, so.
Aren't these contributing to historic structures?
That I, that would be my question. I don't think that they, I mean, obviously the main buildings are, I don't think that the the shed is contributing, I'll have to look that up.
Yeah.
But I mean, it it is in such dilapidated condition, we would need to, you know.
Restore it.
We would need to dismantle it and rebuild it, right? So, um, also the the footprint of that existing building is actually more nonconforming than what we're proposing. So we can actually maintain a five foot setback there and and get 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 the space we need.
Okay.
So that's, and and the reason for not building over the deck, um, once again, this is to kind of minimize this disruption. And you know, the the sort of, the support, the two apartments which are facing the rear, they lose half of their windows by building off the back.
Yeah.
You know, um, so that's why we're, um. Not you do, not at this stage planning on utilizing that.
Okay, okay.
The the, I I remember the previous owner had, it was, had plans for that entire extension on the back, that basically extended.
I was a part of that, when Michael, like, was was doing that, yeah. But I think he, uh, it was a little bit too big of a project for him. And I, you know, I'm just thinking about it now, it's in hindsight, it seems like it would be a little bit too grandiose.
And those are accessory buildings that are back there falling down. I mean, the.
Yeah.
One in the back is basically being held up by the trees next door.
Yeah. I I would still suggest looking into when those are built, if they're contributing. Personally, I'd like to see the plan not have them just be torn down just because they're in disrepair. Restoring village, historic buildings, maybe an opportunity to restore those buildings and and having be a part of the plan. Maybe.
You know, when we get to, you know, we're gonna do a discussion, I am with Architectural Review Board, we'll go up sack, take a look at them and say. Yeah, obviously, what what is opinion on that.
Yeah, you you can look, look into that. I don't think those, I don't think knowing Michael from before that those buildings are historic back there.
Actually, I think Mike.
I think he built them.
It looks like it was hobbled together.
I think, yeah, I think they're, I.
We'll, we'll, we'll certainly look into it though.
I don't even think they have foundations back there, right? They're just sitting.
That doesn't mean they're not historic.
No, but I think Michael built those. I don't think those were.
Can we, can we talk about the the restaurant and the the use?
Sure.
If if you follow meanings at all, you know, the restaurant usage requires a lot of parking.
Yeah.
Um, and all sorts of, have you, have you tabulated that or considered that?
So I think we're looking at, uh, you know, maybe potentially forty seats here at the, at the most. So that would be what, uh, four, it's one spot per, per, per four, right? So that's ten, ten spots.
Yeah.
And plus, I think there's some additional requirements for, um, staff.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah. So. That's a thought, yeah, yeah. Uh, and and obviously on on site, you have apartments which have their own allotments.
I think we we sort of have, we can cover the apartments onsite.
Yeah.
Um, with even a little bit left over potentially for for staff.
Yeah.
Um, with just the the space we have, so need need for variances for that. I think it's just with the restaurant use. Uh, you know, just with those, uh, parking requirements for a restaurant use, and certainly that would be over, uh, what we, what we can accommodate on site. But.
In one of the documents you guys submitted, you, I I think I read restaurant or office or something. I I assume you're still thinking about different possibilities, or maybe you said retail.
Probably other possibilities there. I mean, I would say, you know, quite frankly, I mean, we've gotta make, you know, I I don't have to make it the. Most property owners have to make the math on all this work, right?
Yeah.
So it might be that if we didn't do the restaurant, we might have to do fewer apartments, you know, maybe it's two apartments instead of four apartments and more retail. But, um, I, you know, I think our, our, our preference here, you know, parking notwithstanding, would be a restaurant use rather than a retail.
Those are my questions at the moment. What do you guys have?
I like it. I think you should keep going with it, personally. It's sort of like the Voodoo Berry property. Right, where they had the two buildings and they kind of combined it into one with the parking in the back with the retail and. Right, where they had the two buildings and they kind of combined it into one with the parking in the back with the retail and
Yeah.
services, so.
Yeah. And they make it work, too.
Yeah, and this just, nothing going on the back of that thing anyway, right, so uh I know there's, I don't know where the village is with this discussion on activating Church Street, but I do know the property next door just had the garage approved for commercial use, so. Yeah. I think it's interesting.
Is and that decking, are you just intend keeping it as is essentially is the the plan?
I think, yeah, just keeping it as is, um you know, I'm just kind of listening in on the whole page discussion, which has been going on for couple of years now and the whole whether or not back page is a waiting area or
Yeah.
something else, I think, you know, obviously, giving our 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 um our um parking uh issues here and also AD issue ADA issues here, I think using that deck for any for dining is not gonna, you know, dining establishment other than maybe some of it for waiting area like on page, um I don't think it would be something we could do.
Right.
You know, I think the rest of it is just gonna probably service the the two apartments in that building, which is what they
Yeah.
are, which is what it is now, basically.
Yeah.
Obviously, you'd have to go through secret review.
Yeah.
Cause it's not, it's not a a type two action.
Yeah, I think it's important that you're you're proposing more housing, though, I think we really are, we're gonna, you know.
Of keeping what's there and hopefully adding adding to that, which we certainly need.
Liz.
Yeah.
Is is it planning board to have it be an addition versus a single, a a separate structure like Anthony was saying, or is it zoning board? Like, they're proposing potentially to add on to one of the historic buildings?
Well, it depends, so you'd probably need both, so everything that they wanna do would require site plan approval and secret review probably by this board. Separately, it would also need significant variances for the expansion of a preexisting nonconforming structure from ZBA as well. And all the relief and all the other relief, all of that, we come from ZBA.
Yeah.
Cause ZBA can't act until secret's completed by this board, which is of course considering the impacts of this to the environment.
I'm gonna uh get back to secret in a moment, but I just just to say, just to follow up on on your point here, I think our next stage here is to go to ARB as a discussion item. Because, you know, especially, you know, to your point about here, you know, if ARB says, you know, give them our argument that we'll need less variance, this is this is attached to the building and this, and ARB says, hey, we're not gonna we want this building separate, you know, then it's, okay, we're gonna go to ZBA to get that that variance, right? But, you know, then they say, okay, we can add on to it. Um but uh just I guess that goes into the next stage, it's sort of like uh ARB discussion item obviously can happen at any point, but everything else here, what is uh what what do we do next, basically?
A pre-submission conference.
Okay.
So pre so doing a discussion item is great, everybody can say, hmm, that's interesting, but when you do a pre-sub submission conference, it's a public hearing, then out of that comes a pre-submission conference report, which, you know, we do a deep dive into all the code requirements, where you need relief, where, you know, there might be some flexibility, you know, otherwise, you know, you don't have all those pieces, you know, we're scrambling, looking at the code, you know, cause it's a discussion item. So um I would say, once you get a little closer to what you think you want, I mean, I don't know if you do it now. Is you're developing this at this point, right?
Right.
You might wanna get that input from the ARB before you, and I'll put a little more, you know, into the plans as far as what's existing, what's proposed and, you know, make them a little clearer, I couldn't figure out what existed and what was proposed from these, oh, I don't know, you guys know, you guys know it better than I.
Yeah, I know, this has a long way to go. This this has a long way to go with the design development and whatnot, but we did wanna just kind of introduce this back to the board, just to see what any
Yeah. Right, right. Right.
concerns or comments would be before going much further with this.
At the pre-submission conference, you don't have to have fully developed
Yeah.
plans, you have to have, you know, enough for the board to get their arms around it to understand what's being proposed and.
We did something similar to what we're doing for two oh three, you know, which was a a a nice landscape plan and.
That, no, I don't have to worry, that had a lot more factor.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you had any discussions on the restaurant with the with the um building department on it of creating a new wet use? Cause I would just say, I'm just asking, because I had a client that was looking for to put a restaurant in, and I got told by the building department that it couldn't happen, cause we've already maxed out on our wet uses in this.
Okay, yeah, it was a odd to talk to Ken about that, I did actually, we did speak to him very early on about this uh about the property, but not at that point where we even knew whether a restaurant was was in consideration, so, but we can um discuss that.
I would ask them before, you know, two or three hours ago.
Yeah, no, thanks for alerting me to that, because that would certainly be a significant one.
Would it come down to like sewage capacity?
Yeah, they've got some metrics that they're using that I'm.
There are are allotments, so so the the village is in, as you know, in the process of ex-expanding or trying to expand the the collection pipe system. And what uh what uh Wagner Engineering has been doing is looking at what exists now and figuring out the the flow associated with that use, so it's a restaurant's X, if it's if it's a, you know, um if it's a clothing shop, it's much less. Um so you you know, there there's room, there is room for expansion, but it's being filled out on our plans with or the village's plans with other places, other things, and more properties that already exist to add on, so it's it's worth having the conversation. That's that's true, and just to clarify, I I know you're interested in this, we we can't have you um comment today, but if this goes to a public hearing, um if they decide to go to a a pre-submission conference, that is a public hearing, and that that's open to.
Just had some questions about where would the apartments going to go in one eleven, that's all, that was my only question.
Ah.
Because I can't tell, cause it's all black and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the existing apartments, keeping them the same, right, and then I'm still trying to figure out exactly how to do the addition or if it's a separate structure, so you're not, we're not even really at that stage yet to really give you an answer. I think at the next pre-submission com uh conference will probably have a much clearer picture of what that's gonna look like.
Um and I to to be clear, are you are you saying that the uh the um is it number three is the is up there? Um the that structure would be conforming to dimensional in terms of in terms of.
This this addition here would be conforming, it'll have five feet off offsets, it's right now being conceived as a one-story building, so it'll be uh fifteen uh fifteen-foot height restriction.
Okay.
Will be under the seventy percent uh block coverage. I the only thing that might be actually be a little bit tricky on number three, it's not really an issue on number eleven, but on number three, it's going to be the twenty percent uh landscaping. Uh if, you know, depending on how much parking we try to get in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So um yeah, sort of says sort of minimal kind of dimensional requirements, and even for number eleven, too, kind of a minimal dimensional um variances, it's more about use.
You just turn the deck into a green.
Yeah, we can do like a little green deck kind of thing.
That went through my head as well, yeah, yeah, you did, sure. Um wow, good for you for doing that, cause it they're relatively narrow spa uh properties, so it's a little tricky. Good, other other thoughts, anyone? Um. And that's I any any and was that helpful in any way or anything else you're looking for?
Really helpful, I mean, we weren't really sure if you were gonna run us out here with pitchforks or at least have a.
We forgot our pitchforks today, but um but uh so you're in luck.
Yeah, this is this was very helpful, so I think we have some direction to move forward with this.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. Uh we're moving on to number five, which is a public hearing. Um so uh it is uh seventy six and eighty two Hempstead Street, this is um uh being represented by Dennis Downs.
Public hearings are first on your agenda.
Yeah, sounds good.
Cause that, the majority of public are here, right?
Yeah. Yeah. You're right. Dennis, apologies for that.
No problem.
Uh that's a very good idea. Uh. Go ahead, Dennis, if you wanna introduce it.
Down's forty nine Preston Street, set up with you up, right, so this involves a lot line modification. It needs two parcels.
I'm sorry, one second, what do we need? Ah, we do need, I'm sorry, I apologize, that was my mistake.
So moved.
Thank you, uh Ron, that's a motion to open a public hearing, seconded by Drew, all votes in favor.
Yeah.
Unanimous. So it is now open public hearing, I I apologize, that.
No problem, right, so um there's two lots that originally were one parcel with several other lots on Hempstead Street being one big parcel owned by the Williams family. And over the years, twenty twenty-five years, they've been splitting off small pieces with a cottage on, so that I think there were a total of three cottages on Hempstead Street, then came the very large parcel, thirty-six thousand square foot, and ET Williams owned it. Um this particular lot that's adjacent to the Williams house is owned by his son-in-law and daughter. And uh and there's a very small cottage on it, it's got twenty-five hundred and some odd dollar square feet. So the um the intention here is to avoid, is to eliminate some of the encroachments that seventy-six Hempstead Street has on eighty-two Hempstead Street.
Yep.
So one of them is this three hundred sixty-seven square feet of driveway that's on the small parcel cottage that's being used by the cottage, but belongs to eighty-two. Then in the back, we've got a shed that's actually over the boundary line into eighty-two, and they've been there historically for years, probably the last fifty years. Nothing's pretty much, nothing has changed uh with respect to these properties in the last fifty years. So the uh family got together and decided, let's eliminate the the encroachments so that we don't have title problems going down the road, and uh we'll do an exchange, so pretty much Williams is exchanging, is giving some land to his son-in-law and daughter, and uh and that's pretty much it.
Yep.
You've got photographs where I showed you where the driveway's coming in, it's all, it's gravel driveway, but it it goes over the boundary line right up to that large tree that's there, the tree's gonna stay, they don't wanna take the tree down.
Right.
But they park right next to.
Then to so the I know it was the camera before, I think I know the answer to this, but I wanna be clear for to say it out loud. Um when it was originally divided up, there were some covenants that were required.
Yeah.
We all looked into that, or you folks looked into that?
Basically, it just states that any future lot line modification requires review and approval from this board.
Fine.
And that had to do with with the house that's slightly to the north of us, it was that house is being split off from ET Williams' house. And then that's when they imposed the covenant that said, no further subdivision without plane would approve, but Williams has thirty-six thousand square feet plus, so he's well over the requirement
Yeah.
of twenty thousand, so he, there's no problem with that.
Yeah.
Uh it's just obviously needs board approval.
And I I saw on the on the plan, on the survey, that there's there's nothing underground, the the um the su uh the subject tanks are not in those areas.
Not in those areas.
That was something that was in my head, I wanna make sure.
No, that that question came up very early, we'll make sure they're not transferring something.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, 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 you need one. Um. Um it's pretty straightforward, anyone have questions about it, are you familiar with it? Um. Um. Anyone from the audience, from the in the in the public who's has has a any questions or one, is anyone online?
They all went home.
They all went home, they all went home. Um. Okay, I think it's, I think it seems okay. Um then if 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 we're, and and you're okay with where we are now, right?
Yeah, I would add that it's a secret type two action, which means that there is no further review required of the secret.
Fine, fine.
And that also does require uh assistance review from that property.
Yeah, yeah, this ultimately, I I think this meeting, this public meeting was a was a, that, you know, bureaucratic requirement, and and we're fulfilling it by being here. Um but there's been no questions about this, and it everything seems to be lined up.
Yeah, I have letters from Northwood, three of the most clo- the closest neighbors all sent emails saying they had no.
Yeah, why, yeah.
This, that they, that's what they've been looking at, will be.
Yeah, nothing is physically changing.
They're not even gonna know.
Well, if that's if everyone's okay with this, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Grania. Thank you, Drew.
Second.
Um all votes in favor of closing the public hearing.
Hi.
Unanimous, and um and then we can.
Probably have a final conditional approval resolution for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless she has one tonight.
I don't think we have that yet, do we? So why don't we, why don't we request of our uh uh from uh Kathy that for the next meeting, we'll have a a con- uh approval.
Sounds good.
And we can vote on SM. And uh you can tell the Williamses and 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 family that by then it should be fine. Good, thank you, Dennis, and uh we'll put your beginning of the meeting next time, if you care to come back. If you haven't had enough of us. Um. What's that?
The motion.
To adjourn to the next meeting, so I need a motion, there is reminds me, a a motion to adjourn to the next meeting. Thank you, Drew.
Second.
Thank you, Grania, thank you, thank you, all votes in favor.
Bye.
Very good, all right, that brings us to the end of our meeting, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ron, uh and seconded by Larry, all votes in favor.
Right.
Thank you. And I I meant to say, um this is, I think you're you're last evening with us.
Last last planning board meeting, yeah.
Um so um thank you, I you're gonna be missed, I really.
Please for this period.
I've really enjoyed your input and your intelligence and your and your knowledge, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, six years.
Six years is.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a long time.
Yeah, I know, right? Yesterday, a couple chair, different chair.
Hmm, hmm, right, right, well, you'll be missed.
No, thanks, good luck on everything.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, good luck on the new venture.
I agree, yeah, yeah, we're close.
Yeah, I was on.